Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Been waiting on you.
But.
Yeah. I wish there was an easier way.
That one day we'll.
Good, okay. All right. Okay, good evening, everybody. We're going to go ahead and call to order the meeting of the City of Bloomington Township. And if he could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to. Of the states. Of the political and foundation. Indivisible, liberty and justice.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we do a rule call.
Trustee Kearns.
Here.
Trustee Montney.
Here.
Trustee Becker.
Here.
Trustee Hendricks.
Here.
Trustee Lee.
Here.
Trustee Crumpler.
Here.
Trustee Milowamway.
Here. And at this point, we need to. A motion to allow trustee Ward to participate remotely.
I'll move.
Okay, motion by trustee Hendricks and second by trustee Becker.
All right. And just for the record, she's requested to attend remotely due to professional work reasons. All right, trustee Kearns.
Yes.
Trustee Montney.
Yes.
Trustee Becker.
Yes.
Trustee Hendricks.
Aye.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Crumpler.
Yes.
Trustee Milowamway.
Yes. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments?
We received no emailed public comment or anyone registered to speak in person.
Okay, thank you. And we're going to move to consent agenda. And did we, let's check and see to make sure trustee Ward is here.
I am here, can you hear me okay?
Yep, you're okay. So now we're moving on to the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll move.
Okay, trustee Hendricks.
I'll second.
Okay, trustee Kearns. Are we doing clickers?
Yep.
Okay.
All right, that's it, Phil.
Oh, and.
And I'll say aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Awesome. And we do not have anything on the regular agenda, so we're going to move on to reports by elected officials. And starting with township supervisors, Garrett.
Um, I really don't have anything additional other than the. What my, is in my board report. Or supervisor's report, do you have any questions?
Any question, trustees?
Never mind, I do have one more thing to add. Next month, we have a public hearing, so you need to be here at 5:15 for the budget.
Okay. That was good.
Yeah, March 24th.
Okay. Now we're going to go to assessor, Scudder.
Thank you. My, my reports on the exemptions that are. Allowed on your assessment for property taxes, tax bills will be coming out in April and. The exemptions will be listed on your tax notice. So if you are owner occupied, you might want to make sure that you have all the exemptions you're entitled to as a property owner. Any questions?
Yeah, just, just for my own edification, because I know my, my mom was asking about the senior. Citizens Home exemption as well as the. Or the senior freeze or senior homestead exemption, so. Is all that information like readily available somewhere online if someone needed to get the instructions? Because you have to apply for it annually, right, that one at least.
The exemptions are all listed on the supervisor of assessments website at the county. You can, they have a fillable form you can fill out on the website and send it in. The general homestead doesn't have to be done every year.
Okay.
It's, it's only when the transfer of the title changes of the home, then they might take it off. The senior exemption, once it's applied for the first time, it usually stays on until that changes. But the senior freeze does have to be every year.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Other questions? Okay. Seeing none. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor, so you can opt out by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned, we will see you at six o'clock.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting of the Bloomington City Council to order. If everyone could stand, if able, for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, could you please call the rule?
Councilmember Kearns, here. Councilmember Motney, here. Councilmember Danenberger,
here. Councilmember Becker, here. Councilmember Hendricks, here. Councilmember Lee,
here. Councilmember Crumpler, here. Mayor Milowambe.
Here. And we do have Councilmember Ward, who has requested to attend the meeting remotely due to professional work reasons. And is there a motion to allow her to participate remotely?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Kearns and seconded by Councilmember Danenberger. And are we doing a roll call?
Yes, please. Councilmember Kearns?
Yes.
Councilmember Motney?
Yes.
Councilmember Danenberger?
Yes.
Councilmember Becker?
Yes.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Crumpler?
Yes.
Okay, Councilmember Ward, are you there?
I am.
Okay, thank you. At this point, I'd like to, for someone to make a motion?
I have a motion, Chair. I'd like to motion to amend the agenda to allow the members of the city council, the mayor, city staff, to attend the vigil taking place this evening in honor of the victims of the tragic event that occurred over the weekend. And moving item, items eight B, eight D, and agenda item nine to the committee of the whole meeting scheduled for March seventeenth next month.
Second.
Okay, okay, moved by Councilmember Danenberger, seconded by Councilmember Hendricks. Doing a roll call as well?
Yes, please.
I have a comment instead of.
Sure.
While I appreciate the spirit of this and the incredible tragedies what's occurred, I'm very concerned about us pushing the conversations about our infrastructure and our capital projects, given the extent which I have heard from people expressing concern about the condition of our water. And waiting three weeks for that conversation is concerning. So I don't know if perhaps there's the opportunity to pull back and have the capital projects discussion, but I would like to have a venue where we can talk about the water quality and the investments we're going to be making to remedy that issue.
Sounds good.
Continue with the vote?
Yep.
Okay. Councilmember Kearns?
Yes.
Councilmember Motney?
Yes.
Councilmember Danenberger?
Yes.
Councilmember Becker?
Yes.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Crumpler?
Yes.
Okay. At this one, we're going to move into recognition and appointments. We are, we have a presentation about the city of Bloomington Police Department, Police Officer Commission certificates to Officer Alexis Swartson-Druber, Officer Taylor White, and Officer Whitney Bozarth, upon completion of their probationary period as requested by the police department. And I believe Chief Simmington is going to do the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, elected officials, city manager, deputy city managers, and to our community. I am elated today to share that we have three officers joining with me today for their commissioning. They have committed themselves to serving in the most noble of professions here in Bloomington, Illinois. When a majority are not willing to serve in this capacity, they have raised their hands to accept the oath of office, to work on behalf of others, to bring peace and chaos, to run towards danger when others are in need, and to serve with honesty, integrity, professionalism, commitment, reverence for law, and respect for human dignity. The purpose of police is to protect the vulnerable from harm. Their why is to serve in this occupation and in this community is an outstanding gesture. These three leaders, who I am very proud of, are here to work for us, for you, for our community. I am grateful they chose to serve here with one of the premier law enforcement agencies in Illinois. First, I'll start with Whitney Bozarth. Whitney was hired May first of 2023. She grew up here in the Bloomington Normal area and graduated from Normal West High School. She received her bachelor's degree in criminal justice and sociology, minoring in psychology from Eureka College. Whitney also attended the National Forensics Academy in Tennessee. Before joining us, Whitney worked at a nursing home for three years while attending college. She is a proud participant of the Bloomington Police Department's six-month internship program, which led to her leading, sorry, which led to her applying to be a police officer with the city. Whitney enjoys working out and going on trips with friends. Whitney, here's your commission. Officer Alexis Swartson-Trooper was hired May first of 2023. She's a graduate of Normal Community High School. She attended Heartland Community College, where she received her associate's degree in criminal justice and played softball at an elite level. Alexis then transferred to Lewis University, where she received a bachelor's degree in criminal justice and a minor in coaching. Alexis also played softball at Lewis University as well. Before joining the Bloomington Police Department, she worked at Heartland Community College in the Public Safety Division for approximately two years. Alexis has two German shepherds named Volt and Lily, and enjoys playing with her dogs, cooking and baking, working out, and going to the St. Louis Cardinals games. She is a proud second-generation police officer for the Bloomington Police Department. Her dad, Sergeant Josh Swartson-Trooper, is also in attendance today. Very proud that she chose to serve with us. She received an exemplary performance citation award in her first year with the police department. Alexis, here's your commission. Next, we have Officer Taylor White. He was hired on August twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three, and he and his fiancee, Tyler, who is actually in attendance tonight, live here in the Bloomington area. He participated in our lateral officer program. Taylor attended St. Ambrose University, where he received his criminal justice degree, and worked at the Tuscola Police Department for two years prior to joining the Bloomington Police Department. Outside of work, Taylor enjoys fishing, hunting, and golfing. Taylor, here is your commission. Thanks again for the opportunity to recognize these officers. We appreciate your support and have a good evening.
Okay, thank you very much, Chief. And Taylor, Alexis, and also Whitney, want to congratulate you on joining one of the best police departments, not only in the state, but also in the country. And we appreciate your dedication to public service, but also public safety, because public safety is really the foundation of a, of a community, a good community that thrives. So thank you very much. Appreciate that. Next, we have item B, recognition of board and commission appointment.
Yes, this evening, we are recognizing Serene Vespunder to the liquor commission.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. And next, we are going to go on to public comment. Do we have any public comment, Madam Clerk?
We do. So we received emailed public comment from four individuals. Those were provided to council earlier today. That's from Kay Lantner, Kathy Olson, Brian Walsh, and Sky Baker. And then we have four people registered to speak in person. We'll start with Gary Lambert after you read your statement, and then follow up with Zach Carlson.
Thank you. Public comment is an opportunity for speakers to provide their views and feedback to the city council. It is also an opportunity for the city council to listen and hear diverse points of view, to maximize the impact of public comment, and show respect for the expression of all views. Speakers should maintain civility and focus on city issues. Speakers must identify themselves for the record but are not required to give their address. Each speaker is given the floor for three minutes, and the council does not respond or engage in debate. Any speaker that engages in threatening or disorderly behavior will be deemed out of order and their time ceased.
Hello. I am Gary Lambert. Just a quick comment. You've got four speakers, half hour potentially, and we are still limited to three minutes. I see no reason for it. Water. Don't know about yours. The smell and taste of mine is like it's runoff from a septic tank. I don't know how anybody stands it. I don't know how you, as council members, got it to this point. It's not any one individual. It's a collection over the last thirty years. We had a regional study thirty-five years ago called the McTaz Project. That was the long-range plan to drill wells out near the Tazwell-McLean County line, and that was to serve as a regional supply. I don't think anything's been done with it. Had plenty of time for new libraries, water parks. We're going to spend thirty million originally on the streetscape. Last number I heard was eighty million. You folks don't understand it. What the people of this town are putting up with. I saw something, December, I guess, from our city manager. He says we have a structural deficit. Yet we've got all kinds of money when it comes to all the niceties. Not enough to provide decent drinking water. I was surprised on Friday to hear that, oh, we'll just take over and we'll buy four million dollars. That's been talked about for at least the last ten, twelve years ago, those buildings. I haven't heard any discussion about it. All of a sudden, it's a done deal. Kind of sounds like the owner's property, done before approval. I hate to see what that's going to end up costing us. I suggest that it's not a structural deficit in dollars, but a structural deficit in common sense. Thank you.
Okay, next.
All right. Next up, we have Zach Carlson, and then to follow will be Noah Tang.
Hello, my name is Zach Carlson. I will invoke today my title as the people's. I will invoke today my title as the people's city manager, as I called dibs on many months ago. I do want to talk-
Get closer to the microphone, sorry.
There we go. So, I do want to speak about the two buildings, or I guess the multiple buildings, I guess, that are on the docket tonight. The first section being the tearing down of front and center, the one next to it, and the Elks across the street. I'd ask you vote no on it, or at least vote no on the parking lot portion of it, right? If they need to come down, I'm not sold to them. My soul is not sold to these buildings. However, I do think we are doing a disservice by automatically going for the wrecking ball and not necessarily examining other options. And there has been other options examined, we have not heard of them, which kind of makes my, my point here regardless. But, as the people's city manager, I've not been informed through email or calls in this process. So, I'd like to see this go forward with some more commissions if need be, a reexamination, maybe a tabling if it can be, just because it seems rushed to go from standing building, who may or may not be in the greatest shape, to parking lot. I know we say this is temporary, however, temporary has a tendency to turn to permanent around here. And I want to see this parking lot five, 10, 15 years from now. I guess the perks of having these things recorded is I can come back five, 10, 15 years from now and see if I was right or not. I'd like to be wrong, I really would, right? If it does come down, there's a lot, I want to be proven wrong, there is a new building there in the future. The second part of it, the bank, love it, go for it. We need housing. I think it's a creative idea, all for it. Hamilton Road, don't need the extension. State Farm has been going more and more remote, as some of you on the council, I'm sure, are pretty aware of. I don't think we necessarily need that road extension to service the anticipated decrease in traffic, right? That money can go towards maybe these buildings, maybe the water, which, side note, and not saying anyone's lying, mine tastes just fine, maybe it's my lead pipes, not entirely sure. Could do something to the taste. Just saying, those are some big concerns. And I do want to point out in my last 30 seconds here, is that we've been going back and forth, we, the city, with the huffs for 20, 25, 30 years now. I was looking back, Mayor Renner threatened eminent domain in 2019. We should have eminent domained them 10 years prior to that, all right? The huffs are slum lords, we've known they've been slum lords, we should have been more proactive and aggressive in that. And regardless of what happens tonight, I do want to see the city be more proactive in these efforts and go for targeting these, these delictive property owners. And lastly, I'm still upset there's no old style at the Bison Games. I'll remind you as long as I can.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, next up, we have Noah Tang, and then our last public comment will be Quinlan Tisdale.
Hi, my name is Noah Tang. I would like to talk about the agenda items A and C today. Regarding the destruction of several historic properties downtown for a surface parking lot, we need to ensure that we use our guardrails of standards against this horrible building owners, so in the future, we don't have to demolish something that was neglected for so long. Our downtown needs to remain a destination, and that cannot happen if more and more of it is flattened for the placelessness of suburban-style parking lots. We can put up a temporary gravel lot there to ensure something better is going to replace it. However, an asphalt parking lot up to city code would probably last decades, like the ones we see sit fallow on East Front and Gridley. The city should not adopt a business-as-usual approach to the redevelopment of these parcels. A new parking garage is not the solution here when there is one within 500 feet of it. People walk farther from their cars to Walmart. Also, spending millions on a parking lot that will generate no tax revenue, I believe that is a generational fumble. I suggest we take a strong town's response to this and look at several blocks north on Main for examples of buildings that make our downtown lovable and livable. 20- to 25-foot-wide building structures with varied ownerships and shops with apartments above, that's a resilient development pattern. If building becomes vacant, it only occupies a small portion of the block, whereas instead, with the example, front and center, the entire block is dead, right? That dead bird's been in that window for, what, two, three years now? Building like this also increases the tax base, unlike a publicly-owned parking garage. Our most efficient buildings from a tax perspective are these traditional-style downtown shophouses. Lastly, I would like to ask the council to reconsider the extension of Hamilton Road with the State Farm south far from full capacity, and them moving more and more remote or more and more out into other locations. I do not think we need to build another permanent liability or other over-engineered road in that part of town. I would suggest doing another traffic study. I simply think we do not need it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, last up, we have Quinlan Tisdale.
Hello, my name is Quinlan Tisdale, and I'm here to talk as well about the front and center building and the other buildings being purchased. I love to see movement on getting those demolished into a state where something else can be done with the parcels, but I am disappointed to see the possibility of a parking lot there. As the other speakers tonight have said, I don't think it adds a lot of value to the city. There are other parking lots nearby, and if you have ever been around there, most of them are never full, even on the busiest days. If we put a building there, that's something that adds so much value. You have a small business in the front that will produce jobs, that's money, that's value, that's a reason to come to the downtown area. Upstairs, more housing, we need more housing always and forever. So, those are the two big things. And as far as, as a temporary measure, definitely, I want to encourage you, city council, do not rest on your laurels on that. If it becomes a parking lot, it needs to become a building later. It can be a parking lot for a bit, but if you sit on your laurels and wait, then it will be a parking lot forever. That is all I had to say, thank you.
There's no further public comment.
Okay, thank you. So, I think at this point, we are going to the consent agenda, and Item 7C was amended, and the amended memo was provided to council prior to the meeting. And note that the amendment did not impact the agenda as originally published. So, we're going to move on then to the consent agenda, and is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Hendricks, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dannenberger, and we're going to do the clickers, and we can ask Councilmember Ward now, I guess, if how she wants to vote.
Aye.
Okay. All right, so the consent agenda passes, no names to announce, and we are now going to move to the regular agenda, and we're going to start with Item 8A, consideration and action on an ordinance waiving the formal bidding requirements and approving an agreement with Front and Center Property LLC for the purchase of a downtown parking complex in the amount of $3,929,189.14, and approving an agreement regarding the donation of certain real property as requested by the administration department. And first of all, I wanted to say thank you to the staff, city manager Jergens, and, you know, and his staff, particularly in economic development, by, for providing us with something to consider tonight. I know that this has been a long time coming. We have talked about these properties for quite a while, and so today, we have an opportunity to do something about it, and as you've heard from comments from others, is that the front and center has been a building that's been, one that's been difficult to deal with. And today, I think we have that opportunity. I realize not everybody is, you know, is not going to think that it's a perfect solution, but I think it's a, it's an opportunity for us to move forward. And I'm also, I think it's important to remember that I think all of this is happening because of the downtown streetscape plan that we put together, which has encouraged quite a few people to, to consider investing in our downtown. So, you know, with that, I'm going to turn it over to city manager Jergens to present the item.
Thank you, Mayor, and council, if you could go to the next slide. Tonight, this is just kind of an overview of the property. We are really excited to be here tonight, and I have to say to the, to the people who spoke in public comment, you know, we agree with a lot of what you're saying, and we have tried for years to get this property redeveloped. We have had so many developers, so many potential people interested in these buildings, go through these buildings. Unfortunately, because of the condition of them, a lot of times, you know, the numbers just did not work. And we've tried so many different, tried to cut this so many different ways that we ultimately landed on, unless we were just going to throw multi-multi-millions of dollars at this, that this was the best next step, to finally get site control of this property, to get it cleared, and to be able to move to the next step, as well as keeping, having the Commerce Bank Building donated to us so that we can put that in a position to get redeveloped. We'll talk a little bit about that more in a minute. But again, I just want to reiterate, for years, we have been trying to make progress on these properties and having conversations and looking at these issues, and so tonight, we are happy that we're finally able to bring two agreements forward that we think will set the stage for the future here. Next slide, please. The first agreement is with Front and Center Property LLC. This agreement will give us title to these properties, including the front and center building, the DUI countermeasures building, and the Elks building. There are different property owners, two different property owners involved in this. Front and Center Property LLC has gotten interest in those properties. They will also be responsible for demoing those. And when I say we agree with a lot of the public comment, we agree, that park, surface parking is not the highest and best use. We do not want this to be surface parking for very long at all. Even the developers don't want, do not want it to be surface parking. And when you look at how long these buildings have been vacant, it's almost striking that the front and center building has sat there vacant for 17 years. I think the pigeon's been in there for at least three years. The Elks property, vacant for 13 years. The DUI countermeasures building, now almost two years, I think that it's been vacant. So, these properties have been vacant for a number of years. We've tried so many different ways to get this redeveloped. People remember the hotel days. We, I will tell you, we even went back and said, could we somehow get a hotel developed on this property, and it was just too expensive at this location. So, we tried so many different alternatives, and we finally landed on, let's get these properties cleared, let's get it in control of the city, we've got a TIF now, and then hopefully, we hold this for a short amount of time, and then the property gets redeveloped into other, better uses. But I'm going to turn this over to Billy Tyus to talk a little bit about the parking of it. Before I do that, just real quick, of course, the price for this is 3.93 million roughly. We hope, or not we hope, the contract provides that this will all be completed by the end of 2025, hopefully even much sooner than that. So, we're going to start to see progress soon on this if these contracts are approved. And if you could go to the next slide, and I'm going to ask Deputy City Manager Tyus to talk a little bit about the parking aspect of that and how that ties in.
Thank you, I appreciate that. As the manager said, we have been trying for years now to get those buildings redeveloped or get something done with them. Unfortunately, it just hasn't worked out for a number of people who have come through. We know that parking, as the manager said, is not the highest and best use, it's not the end game, I will say, as you can see on the screen, but it will be of great help for the time being, and we know that for sure. We've had close to 2 million visitors over the last 12 months within our downtown based on, on software that we have, we know that. There's a need for people looking to come to our downtown. And we've had a ramp up at the arena, and this, these lots will be of significant help as we continue to ramp up at the arena for arts and entertainment events. People are looking for places to park. This will be of great help for that. Again, it's, it's, we know that we have significant interest in, what did I do? Oh, keep going, sorry. We know that we've had significant interest in the Commerce Bank Building. Go ahead, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, and apologize for interrupting you, but we had talked about, with this being 6:30, we know the vigil is happening at this time. Again, to remind everyone, this past weekend, we had a tragedy that occurred where four people died, and we figured, in honor of those people, that we would observe a minute of silence here. So, if you would, please join me in this minute of silence. Thank you. Please continue, Billy.
Thank you. As I was saying, we know that we've had significant interest, and are actually having conversations with someone who is interested in developing housing in the former People's Bank Building, the Commerce Bank Building. And these lots, at least a portion of them, we know for sure, will be able to provide support for that housing development as well. So, again, we, as the manager said, as we heard, our first desire wouldn't have been parking, but we're able to accomplish addressing these problem properties that have been problems for years as part of this project A and B. We do know that these lots, as I said, will be of significant help for the time being in terms of some of the needs in our downtown.
Yeah, and before we go to the next slide, I would also just say, and you can actually go, but you can see the People's Bank, the Commerce Bank Building up there in the upper right-hand corner. The developer that we're currently talking to, to make the project feasible, they're actually going to need more space on this property to add more housing units. So, it's very possible that we'll come back with an amendment at some point, and not all of this will even be developed as surface parking. Now, it depends on how long it takes to work some of that out, the developers using tax credits, and that takes time, but, you know, we are not going to stop trying to market this property and try to get something going, but we've got to have site control, and that's, that's what a lot of this is about. So, if you could go to the next slide. The second agreement associated with this is with Consolidated Properties LLC. This is the agreement where they will be donating the Commerce Bank Building to the city, and donating, we are paying, I think, maybe $20,000 in property taxes to make sure that all of our taxing partners get paid with the road on it, but otherwise, this property is being completely donated free and clear to the city. We will have time for an inspection. This property, and it's hard to believe, this property's been vacant for 12 years, and it is a contributing structure, and it's on the national register as a historic building. And as we've talked about, we really want to see this redeveloped into housing. It could be either affordable housing tax credits, it could be senior housing tax credits, but we're working with interested parties, and we are excited about that potential development. You know, this isn't just historic, this building is really, really historic. So, the idea of trying to get this back into a functioning way and not, and also potentially helping us with some of the housing issues is really exciting to city staff. And I think that's all I've got. We're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Do we have any, Councilmember Crown, please?
No, thank you, Mayor. You know, I think this is potentially a great project for the city. I do hope that when this project goes forward, I know Catalyst is one of the potential partners. I really hope that the agreements we are able to write with Catalyst are written to ensure timely completion of the portion of the project. I just, you know, have some concerns about that based on past, past experiences. Further, you know, in the past year, we've made real progress in our relationship with the local unions, particularly around PLA agreements, and I really hope that the union leaders are at the table as these plans for, for all of these projects are finalized. Thank you.
Councilmember Martin?
I just wanted to ask a clarifying question about whether or not the parking spaces are going to be monetized.
Yes, it's our intent to, to do that, excuse me, to do that. In fact, they were- In fact, they would be, will have eventually potentially have gates, and, you know, similar to all of our parking passes for other parking locations in the downtown. In addition, when there are games at the arena and different events at the arena, Anthony Nelson from Arts and Entertainment has talked to us about opening the gates and actually being able to charge a higher admission price there. So absolutely, we will have a revenue stream from the parking as long as it is parking.
And to the question about timeliness, the the agreement calls for these to be completed in a in a timely manner, absolutely.
Councilmember Hendricks?
I would just briefly add, yeah, I I definitely understand the concerns that individuals have with surface parking, and that's been something that I know that I've annoyed Billy with probably quite a few times in the meetings that we're leaning up to this, which was if we are tearing down these buildings, the story cannot be parking. And so that is something that has been on their radar, and I trust them in that. And, you know, we have the lot across, the Butler Lot that is there, and we've been approached a few times about possible developments, and the city has always been open to those possibilities, which tells me that these aren't just words, obviously, which I don't believe that they are, but there is a real desire to develop that area. I think the best thing, you know, this is the best situation that we have at the moment. I'm grateful that we are getting these from the particular owners. I actually dealt with them extensively when, 14 years ago, when I was on the Pekin City Council, and they owned a great deal of properties in our downtown there as well. So, and we had to tear down quite a few buildings as well. So I do think this is the 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 best option that we have at the moment, and I will continue to advocate for development at these properties.
Councilmember.
Yeah, thank you. So I I appreciate all the work and energy the staff has put into this. And so I I guess I want to hear what we're doing to avoid situations like this in the future so that we don't continue to have buildings that have been left vacant for decades, and then our only option is to tear them down and hope someone wants to do something with it more than a parking lot. So I definitely want to know what what the city is doing to make sure that we're not continuing to be in this position.
That's a, that's an excellent point. I'm actually going to have Billy respond to that because I think he's got a a good, we've put in place a good solution, not quick enough to address this, but Billy, do you want to address that?
Yeah, absolutely. So in 2023, this this council, or some of you, approved a an amendment to our preservation ordinance and created a vacant properties ordinance as part of it as well, which requires owners of vacant properties to first register. But secondarily, it allows us to have inspections in some of these buildings. Prior to that, we weren't able to get into some of these buildings, you know, some of which that looked okay or looked good on the outside, but were quickly deteriorating on the inside. With the passage of that ordinance, we're now able to get into the buildings and and find these things sooner. That's, you know, one of the ways that we were able to see some of the dilapidation in the in the front and center building was because of that ordinance, because we were able to go in and see what was happening. That's happening now with other buildings.
Okay, thank you. Want to make sure, Councilmember Ward, if she has anything to add or questions?
Yeah, I mean, building on on what Councilmember Kearns just said, and and that response, thank you. Deputy City, I really appreciate that response. But building on that, this underscores the point I was making at last council meeting about our need to get a grip on abandoned properties and properties that are derelict and and get better understanding of what what is out there. I don't have clarity about those 929 that were referred to last time, and it feels to me like like that just leads us down this of repeating the kind of thing that we're we're experiencing tonight. Perhaps this is on a much larger scale than those 929 individual places. But when you live on a block with some of those properties, it feels just as big and just as problematic as this one. So I hope that we can use this as a lesson to get a handle on those properties as well.
Okay, sounds good. I don't see any other lights, so Councilmember Ward.
Just one other comment. We do, people do travel in cars, and we do need places to park them. And in terms of the cost per parking place relative to the proposal and the number that's currently out there for some other parking downtown, this is considerably less on a per parking place basis. For that reason, I would also like to go ahead and motion that we approve this item as presented.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, second by Councilmember Crumpler. Use your clickers and vote.
I vote aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, yeah, it passes, no names to announce. Thank you. And we are going to move to. Yeah, item 8C, consideration and action to approve a resolution to enter into a joint funding agreement to federally funded construction of Hamilton Road from Bun Street to Commerce Parkway in the amount of $16,531,082, as requested by the Engineering Department. And I'm going to turn it over to City Manager Jergens.
Thank you again, and we will, we'll come back with some of these other discussions. But it was important for us tonight, Jim, if you want to come on forward, to talk about this agreement and and to get this agreement considered and approved by the council regarding Hamilton Road, and also to provide an update. So with that, I'll turn it over to our interim Director of Engineering, Jim Karch.
Thank you, City Manager. Mayor and City Council tonight is just, we'll keep comments brief, just wanting to, out of respect. But it is important. This is a project that has been around for 25 years. It is a 1.77-mile, multi-phase, four-lane road that is the hole in the doughnut, so to speak. All across the southern portion of Bloomington, there is, this is, would be the major arterial road that would be 7.2 miles in length. And it also has Constitution Trail, which is, again, a multimodal component important for our community. As well as in FY '26, we're going to have other connecting pieces to the Constitution Trail. So this is another piece that will also complement the work done that's coming in FY '26 for the Fox Creek Road Improvement Project, that two-lane bridge. That project is slated to bid in June. This Phase Two, if we could bring up Slide Two, please. If this Phase Two, tonight before you, this is the federal joint agreement. So we have the money from the feds coming to us for the Phase Two, the red portion there on the proposed Hamilton Road. Council has already voted, approved Phase One, which is the green portion. That is a 5 million, almost $6 million project. This red portion is a 23 million, almost $24 million project. So in totality, this is a $30 million project. A key aspect of it, though, that has made this a challenge is the at-grade rail crossing. Anytime you're crossing the railroad, anytime you're crossing at grade, that is a very difficult negotiation. It's very difficult to work through those pieces. That's the same holdup that we've had with Fox Creek Road. And so again, both of those hurdles have been crossed for both of those projects. Tonight, your action will just allow for us to continue moving forward to meet the June bid deadline. We have STU, Surface Transportation Project dollars, federal dollars, congressional earmarks. This has a lot of different funding sources going into this project. And again, larger for the community and the overall transportation network. It's been part of our planning since the 1960s. So thank you. Ask, and address any questions you have.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. Any questions?
Just one, one quick one. I know that the negotiations with the railroad have been a long time. Could you just tell us where they are right now? Are we at a place where we've reached a taut or whatever?
Yes, yes, I, whenever I started in 2000, this was an old project. So this was one that's been around for a long time, and the hardest piece is always the railroad. And and again, from their perspective, they're trying to provide for safety. You have to think about an at-grade crossing, that is a, that is, that that is difficult for them. They have to provide additional safety measures, so that is hard to negotiate. At this point, we've negotiated with the railroad, we've worked with them, we're finalizing all of those negotiations specifically. So this one is the Norfolk Southern Railroad we're crossing. And as part of that negotiation, we have to relocate some of their siding. So they have storage that they have to accommodate in our community to provide for adequate rail. And so as part of the cost for this dollars, we negotiated an agreement with them to relocate siding over by what they call the good yard, yards. And so it's one where they, they can then store some of their rail lines. And so that was a critical piece of the negotiation. That's done, council's already approved that. At this point, this is one of the final pieces for us to move forward. And at that point, once this is done, we are on board to be able to hit the June letting. So that is actually a really, really big win. Actually, the April letting for this one, for Hamilton Phase Two. I'm getting that confused because we got the Fox Creek Road Improvement as well. That one's slated, we've had some really good negotiations on that with Union Pacific here recently, and kind of broke through some things. So there's quite a bit of exciting work coming up in Bloomington, transportation-related, for major projects that have been around for a while.
Mayor. If I could, I apologize if you touched on this, but also the the closure of that intersection, that is one of the most dangerous intersections. Did you touch on that?
Thank you, City Manager. That is another key one. From Rhodes Lane at Morrissey, that is one for a long time, we've wanted to get rid of that. Anybody who's driven that and tried to make a left turn, the proximity to the railroad, and then the making of that left turn onto Route 150 is just unsafe, and we want that gone. And this road, you'll see, if you look at the red line, I don't have a pointer or anything, but you can see the green placard on the screen, Rhodes Lane. You can see where that's a cul-de-sac. And so we're going to be ending that connection with Morrissey. And so that way, the State Farm Research Facility right there, that won't go out onto Morrissey. It'll come out onto Hamilton Road, thereby making it a extremely safer connection.
I don't see any other question. Councilmember Ward, questions, comments?
No, I don't.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll motion to approve this as presented.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. I think, yep, can't, okay, we'll go, we can't. Let's go to clickers.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. So this passes, no names to announce. I think at this point, we're going to go to adjournment, right? Is there a motion to? Oh, sorry, sorry. Yes, go ahead, update.
Thank you, Mayor, and I've just got a quick update regarding water, if you can put that slide up. First, it's it's good to hear that there were, you know, some people that are not having taste and odor issue, but it's clear there are too many in our community that are, and that is not acceptable. This is a picture of Money Creek Bridge, where there should be water flowing under all of it, and you can see how low it is. Tonight, wanted to bring forward a couple of updates on things that we're doing. Tomorrow, we're going to be issuing a press release with a lot more details. But just wanted to ensure the council and the community, we take this extremely serious, and we're trying a number of different things. One thing that we're doing is we're going to test next week a temporary system that would be a potential solution to it. So we've talked, and we've paved the way for a longer-term solution. Unfortunately, the lead time on that is early '26. So we're looking at a, working with the IAPA actually on a a potential temporary solution that might be in place as early as next week. They've also started to slow the water over the filters and and doing some different with the filtration. So we'll see if that could help to address the issue. And then we are also exploring, and we had electricians looking at, we've talked about the old PAC system, the old filtration system that went offline, you know, 10, 20 years ago, whether or not we could get that up going again. So we're looking at that as well, and appreciate the water staff that are working on these issues and truly trying to address them. Also appreciate the assistance of the IAPAs, they helped to address this. But we will be sending more information out tomorrow, and wanted to let the the community and the council know just some of those very quick updates. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, sounds good.
If I could just ask a question about that. I know many of us are hearing from a lot of people, and I really appreciate you taking the time to provide that update tonight. As our constituents reach out, if there is a location where we could see who's reaching out and what the responses are, and if we could, I'd like to talk about some of the messaging based on some of the frequently asked questions we're receiving. Some of that messaging doesn't really convey, I don't think, the city's intention regarding some of the scenarios that are being presented to us.
Yeah, absolutely. We'd be happy to do that and happy to, if if the council can let us know the types of questions questioning you're getting, that would be helpful. I know, you know, historically, every time we change lakes, there's, seems like there's a taste and odor issue a little bit at least, and, you know, we have said, well, you know, it it always happens, and people get used to it, and it moves on. This time, I don't think we were expecting it to be this bad or to last this long. So some of the early messaging that was just historic in nature is not playing well, did not, did not work well with, you know, the situation we're in. So we are working on trying to get some of that updated as well, and and happy to answer any other questions.
Just one other suggestion about that. If you look at the inventory of questions that you have received at the number or the email address that people are writing in on, I think that would be a great first place to look, as opposed to us sending you more questions because it probably reflects a pretty good distribution as to what we're hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments, concerns, concerns? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Hendricks, second.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Dannenberger, all those in favor, saying aye? Aye, okay, we are adjourned, thank you.